Upon our call to meeting order, who has a roll call until our emergency schedule? Six can see one thing, Nathan, or you ready to go to anything ready?
About just check on the technical.
My first presentation is after which I have a Socrata open books presentation and then it will be followed by presentation from the National Park Service. May I just to nail my little?
May I just, yes, well, while we're getting started, I'll just do my human introductory comments. Trina Netbrough, who is our city treasurer, will be presenting this. This part of the Socrata Open Data Project, this is the second of three phases. This is the phase of the entitled Open Books. It really is the city's checkbook where you'll be able to see those vendors that we had paid over the last, right now goes back to 2010. So you can search and find out how much money we paid to a contractor, or how much we paid for office supplies, or all sorts of things like that. We are demoing this for council tonight. This will go live on the city's website at the start of May. On April 19th, we will be demoing the open payroll portion, which is the final phase, and then that will go live shortly after the open expenditure one. But we wanted to get this used so you could start to see what's coming so the public can understand how we're moving toward a greater transparency in all of the city's financial activity. So with that, I turn it over to Trina.
Guinea, hi. So I'm going to start with this, there's a little discussion about our open books and there's a read more right here. And it gives you some information on quite the questions that people might wonder about what our approval levels are, when we update the information, where we pay, so for our expenditures. So this starts, you can look at all years, all of our expenditures in total. It gives a little chart right here, or you can break it down by specific year. Here, we have six years of data, and then the current year. So it starts at 2010. So you can look in all years, or you can just look at one year. You can click on open expenditures and search by specific type of expenditures, like accounts payable, general government. You can look at inventories, where we get our inventory for water and electric. And you can just drill, continue to drill down. On occasion, we'll also see that these items up here will have explanations. So if you have any questions as to what they are, you're welcome to look at that. And then we'll go back here. So let's look at public safety. So you can drill down by department, and up here, if you want to look at vendor or expense category program, there's all kinds of information in different ways that you can look at this. I know that some people like to go in and download data. That's available also, and we look at that. So this right here, when you go down to look at police, it gives your expenditures by program, which is patrol, police administration, intergovernmental services, investigation, and it breaks it down by expenditure, but you can continue to drill down on there and it'll give you more information.
In these expenditures, they do not include any payroll or employee benefit based ones. That will all be seen in the payroll item that you'll see in two weeks.
So, and here, I can go into our checkbook. And you can actually search by vendor here if you want. I could put in, or I could go to Clallum County. Let me go to entire ledger, checkbook. And I can search right here by Clallum County. And it'll give you anything right here that has Clallum County in the title. But if I want to look at only KUD of Clallum County, I can just click on that, and then again, it'll only show me those items of Clallum County. So there's a ton of different ways that you could search. And again, I'm looking at all years, but I could go and just look at 2015, and it gives you the number of transactions and the amount. It cleared out that item. So going down, you can look by service here, top vendor, and then top expense category. So if I wanted to search maybe right here, go to top vendor, I can look at Magna Specific. And that's currently who we're paying for our solid waste project. This right here, well, you can scroll down and click on capital access because the capital project. So if I continue to drill down, it'll tell me we've paid Magna Specific this many times. If I'm looking at all years, it'll tell me I've had 19 transactions for a total of $13 million. If I want to only look at what we paid currently year-to-date, I can see that we've had three transactions for $2 million. It's just, and then right here, I can use a download feature, where I can download all those transactions if I still choose.
Just a further bit of information, Socrata is a platform that's being used in cities as big as Los Angeles and Boston, down to cities much smaller than us. It also has, Socrata has the President Obama's proposed net federal budget in Socrata, so it's being used in that template. A number of cities in Washington State are using it, including Seattle, Redmond, Port Angeles, Oak Harbor, and a number of others as a way of trying to make data far more transparent to the public. So if somebody wants to find out who we paid and how much, they'll be able to go and directly search that from their own computer, or from a computer at the library without having to fill out a public records request and download that information or print it off so they can have it correctly.
Yeah, so we get a lot of questions about what we paid for professional services, professional services, for instance. And we can drill down right here, say professional services on the type of program that we have. Look at general government, and then go down to finance, and down to my area then accounting. And we can look at what we've paid for the state auditor as of last year. And I can go up here and pick the, that's all years, but I can pick what we paid last year to the state auditor. And the auditor's on my mind because he's going to be here shortly. So do you have any questions?
Okay, I think I have two questions. I need to come to my room. The first question, sorry to interrupt you. The first question, how, is this up to this week, up to yesterday? How, how near time is this?
Well, we pay bi-weekly. Every other week, we pay accounts payable, but I believe we're going to update it every Saturday, is the plan. Because sometimes we pay, you know, on off weeks as well.
I think back one of the many years in council, one of the more commonly asked questions from the public is when we have vendor contracts, or we go up for questions on service. Sometimes the question, well, why don't we use consultants or a vendor from out of the area versus someone who's local? Could I find on this record that how that distributes the expenditures were a vendor of a certain product or project that was local versus someone who we spent money outside the area, Redmond or Ranachero or something?
I think you would have to know whether the company was local or not.
Yeah, it's a question that I recall over the years, and you sometimes get, why didn't we hire a listing, why didn't we send this project out outside of our managers?
But this will answer what we spent towards a specific vendor. They know whether they're local or not. They could look at what we have paid to a specific vendor over several years' time. Any other questions?
I'd just like to tell staff that I appreciate this. This is a good step towards public transparency. That's a lot of numbers to crunch, and I think someone should be pretty specific about what they chose to act with. This is a perfect venue, and I'd like to compliment the city staff for enacting this and making this available for the public. I've got a concern by a relative discussion of the payroll coming online, and we have several organized groups within the city that are employees, and will someone be able to locate a specific person's name and income? And if so, is that named by their collective or union agreement?
The only names that will be disclosed publicly on through the Socrata system will be all of the council members, the city manager, all of the department members. All of the others will be merely identified by the position, so patrol officer, firefighter, police sergeant, things like that, utility worker. That information as to gross pay and benefits is publicly available as a public records request, including the employee's name. What is not discoverable is whatever deductions the employee may be having made, or contributions the employee may be making towards things such as United Way, deferred compensation, or anything else.
Yeah, so I should also mention that we do have pensioners that we pay the fireman's pension, and we did consider that when we're putting this information out there. There are certain folks that we have redacted their names from the information provided. So you may find that, or people might find that as their review of the data.
Those reductions are primarily related to the HIPAA laws and privacy related to healthcare information. Because with our pre-left pensioners, we pay for medical costs, so we can't identify who's getting that medical bill paid.
Great, thank you.
Just one more as to involving the county and maybe other cities along with this. I mean, this is great, and it would be wonderful if our county and maybe Squim and Forks and other surrounding cities, have we invited them to come and look at this?
At, when we demoed the segment on the open budget a few weeks ago, the county administrator and one of the county commissioners was here to see that presentation. The folks at Socrata have been at the Association of Washington Cities meetings, they have been at the Association of Washington Counties, so I know they've had the potential to interact. I don't know what directly, whether Squim is looking at this, or Clallum County, or anybody else. We do know the number of cities that have already enrolled because we have some contact with them, because we will go snoop their data to see, well, how do they have that set up? For instance, the city of Redmond has for its capital $175 million of miscellaneous dollars in capital. So we thought, hmm, that seems a bit nebulous, so we provide a whole lot more detail. But in doing that, but I would suspect over the next few years, you're going to start to see this becoming far more common, rather than being more isolated as it is right now.
No, I would encourage us to go and invite them to take a look at this, so that that way, one, the public can compare Squim and Redmond, Forks, and County all in the same system. So just for the sake of, you know, being a good neighbor, we should invite them to go look at this.
I am excited because there will be a lot of requests for data, and people that, yeah, people are welcome to go out and look at what, besides the caper that we put out, the comprehensive annual financial statement. You'll be able to look at where we paid debt payments to, I mean, where we pay at any number of things, our office supplies, any other questions that people have. It's very exciting, and we hope that it'll free up some staff and allow people to really go in there and dig around.
Does Socrata charge us an annual fee for using this program, or is it a monthly purchase type of request?
It's an annual fee of about $15,000. We also benefit because Socrata is a partner with our enterprise software company, Sun Guard. So all of the background work that we saw, the numbers, and putting all the data out of our financial system is being done free of charge by Sun Guard, which is one of the reasons why we went with Socrata rather than some other options, because we get all of this work. If we had to pay for all of this work, it would be extensive, because we've got two of the top people from Sun Guard assigned to the city of Port Angeles in this data project, because this is the first one where Sun Guard and Socrata together. So we are the, for lack of a better term, we're the Guinea pig.
So, all right, any other questions? Yeah, this is very exciting. We have a lot of good information out there. You can look on this part of the checkbook itself, you can see down to the payment number, what check number it was, when it was, when the amount was, any kind of information like that. And then you can just click on this download, and it brings up itself. So we just are excited about it, and hope you get a chance to look at it soon. Thank you.
Thank you, very much. Our second presentation is after you, is regarding the Elwah River changes, a presentation by the National Park Service. Your spokesperson for your group?
And I will, I'll just give you a real quick introduction to this, and then I'm going to turn it over to the park director. Years and years and years ago, while the Department of Interior was making preparations and plans for the Elwah River restoration project, they hired a team of eminent scientists whose job it has been is studying the river. So they have been looking at the river, watching it for a long, long time. It began while the dams were still in place, and they did a baseline study of the river then. They watched it as the dams gradually came down bit by bit. Now that the dams are gone, they're watching it more, and it evolved into a wild river again. And they have presented to the council before. Tonight, they're going to have to make a presentation that gives you an update on the current status of the river. I saw a version of this presentation earlier today, and I am very confident that you're going to find this very, very interesting. And on top of that, I think they'll even take questions from the council. So with that little bit of an introduction, I want to turn it over to Brian Winter, who is, and Brian, I apologize, I'm not sure of your exact title, but he's the coordinator for the Elwah Project.
Thank you. I'm often called the dam guy, but those are gone, so. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah. So, so Lieutenant Prechong Baiter regrets she's down this week, so I'm filling in for her. As Bill said, we basically give this presentation annually, and so this, the eminent scientists are Dr. Tim Randall, Jennifer Bountree, and Andy Ritchie. They'll tag team this, they put this presentation together. And they're going to pick up from where they left off last year. They'll give a little background in case you don't remember that. But I'm going to turn it over to them. They'll give a condensed version of what Bill saw earlier today, and they'll be happy to take all your questions.
So I'm Tim Randall. I work for Bureau of Reclamation, and I was here last year and a couple of times before, and it's a pleasure to be back. Thanks for having me. So I've been working on the Elwah Project since 1994. I'm a civil engineer, and I manage the sedimentation and river hydrologist group for Bureau of Reclamation. Jennifer Bountree is also a civil engineer, working for Bureau of Reclamation in my same group. And Andy Ritchie is a specialist, a geopolitist with the National Park Service and grew up in Port Angeles. And so this is a great team of people to work with. And we've been also working with other scientists from other agencies, like U.S. Geological Survey, NOAA Fisheries, Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the Elwah Tribe, University of Washington, Seattle University, and other volunteers. I'll give you the sort of the punchline in the next couple of slides, and then we'll go through a little bit more background on that. But of course, the reservoirs trapped a lot of sediment, and then with the removal of those dams, that sediment is eroded and gradually and come on down the river and all the way to the ocean. The sediment concentrations are expected to be near background levels during times when the river flows well. And when the river flow gets up into a more flood stage, then we're going to see the sediment concentrations go up again, which is more of what happened in a natural system. And as of January this year, the phased removal of the two dams has released about 70% of the total reservoir sediments that had accumulated in those reservoirs. And we had been waiting for a big flood for a number of years since the project started, and we finally got it this winter, starting in November. We've had, I think, seven flows where the peak discharge exceeded 10,000 CFS, and four of those exceeded 20,000 CFS. One of those was a 25-foot flood, and so we were happy to see that. We knew that we were going to need some floods after the removal to kind of complete the sediment erosion, and that's happened. So the portion of the remaining reservoir sediment, you know, about 30% of it's still there. Some of it's still vulnerable to erosion during floods, but it's going to have to be a higher and higher flood each time, and getting less and less sediment each time. And 90% of the sediment that has eroded has made it all the way down to the coast to form this big new beach we see here. And it's also the sediment that's gone down the river has widened the river channel, brought a lot of wood with it, and created a lot of good habitat for fish and other wildlife. So during the dam removal, as I was mentioning, we had good base flows, but we didn't have really any floods, so we didn't even get over the two-year flood until after the dams recovered. And then the peak. Sediment concentrations were highest during the removal phases, so for each increment of dam removal resulted in a big surge of sediment, and then it would take a long time to sort of try and settle down. Now, we're in the mode of sediments are pretty low concentration until you get high flows, and then they go up and then they come back down again. That is, the concentrations go up and down with the flow, whereas during the dam removal phase, that wasn't the case. It would remain high and probably were moving the dam. So we did have this plan to remove the dam in phased increments. That was all part of the project design. We knew we couldn't remove the dam all at once, that would work, that would be a disaster. We didn't want to remove it so slowly, like a foot per year. Hardly notice the effects, but no one wants to wait 200 years to remove a 200-foot tall dam. So we had this phase plan, and that's worked very well. Generally, with the sediment the way we wanted to, redistributed it, and we had a controlled release of sediment downstream. And we, as I mentioned, we're going to need some large floods, which we recently got. So this is two aerial photos that Andy Ritchie has been developing. This is Highway 101 Bridge, the Elwah River flowing through Lake Almo here, and here's Elwah Dam. This photo was taken just after they drew Lake Almo down for the first time, but prior to removing any of the dam. And so you get to see what this looked like. This is what it looked like last month. So here's Highway 101 Bridge, there's Elwah Dam. It's the same layout, just a different time period. And you can see there's some sediment terraces left over here and here. They're getting very few, they're growing vegetation nicely. We've got a lot of woody debris or logs that have flooded in and stayed here. That's what we think is going to help promote vegetation or growth of new forest vegetation. This is the same kind of sequence for Lake Mills, so here's the Elwah River coming in from the upstream watershed through Rita Canyon. This is Boulder Creek, and this is Glance Canyon Dam. This photo was taken just before dam removal, but the reservoir was drawn down about 18, 16 feet to expose the delta. So this was the sediment delta that took the upstream in. This is where the sand and gravel drops out, self-oclay deposits further on down underneath the water. And this is what it looks like last month. In this region where we had Delta sediments, 70 feet and thicker, it's all, it's all been redistributed down here. So we have some of these terraces left, a small one here, and this is the complex from Boulder Creek. This is a graph, and I'll take just a moment to explain. So this is the river flowing through Rita Canyon this way. This is Cat Creek, Boulder Creek, and Glance Canyon Dam would be here. These colors represent the thickness of erosion during the first year of dam removal. And so during the first year, these hot colors mean that we were eroded quite a bit of sediment, and this top layer of the delta was completely eroded. And these green or cool colors represent the redeposition of this sediment. We still had a lake, and so all the sediment simply re-applied in the lake. Some of the finest sediments, the silts and some clays, did get out, but all the sand and gravel was recaptured, yes.
You mentioned the, you mentioned the fine sediment, silts and clays. When, I guess it was a couple of years ago, when I went to see what was happening there, the concentration and buildup of sediment, it was gray, it was, it was kind of squishy to the touch, and now it was almost like cement when it got together. I had never seen sediment with that texture, and it was forming new banks. You could walk on it, but it...
Was it spongy?
It was so spongy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a lot of that silt, and sometimes sands can do that too, if they get a lot of water content, and you can get, we call it quicksand. And, but there was a lot of silt in that stuff, and it actually had a lot of cohesion to it. And I'll actually point that out in this next sequence here. So you can see a lot of erosion here, deposition down here. In the second year, we lost Lake Mills, and so we got erosion throughout the entire length of the reservoir. You see some areas here getting wet behind. In the next year, a lot less erosion because the flows were low, and we had erosion more in little isolated pockets. And because of this cohesion, we're now eroding into that mud layer, the river channel becomes narrower and more sinuous. Neandriate rivers require some cohesion, or either through clays or silts or vegetation, otherwise they become wide and great, like what you see over here. And the next year, a lot less erosion, and we start to see, these green colors represent deposition. We're starting to see actual deposition in addition to some lateral erosion. And then a lot of deposition this last year. Even though this year we're in now has the biggest floods, we had the least amount of erosion out of the reservoir. It's because we're just getting to the point where a lot of the, easily, we're going to send them, it's already gone, and we need bigger and bigger floods to get less and less and less. And so we're rapidly approaching the background conditions from the upstream watershed.
What is the color of the water currently, because it was so dark for so long?
We were at Elwah Dam site just before coming here today, and it's actually kind of a, oh, what would you call it, a teal or...
Turquoise.
Yeah, kind of a, there's still, there's still some sediment, and it's not crystal clear. Not like it was last summer, and it'll get that way again this summer. It'll be quite clear. Just conceptually, this is a wall that was put together based on research in other places, and we've actually modified this a little bit too. But you imagine a reservoir, you've got water and this sediment on the bottom, and then you draw the reservoir down, just where you're exposing just the top surface of the sediment. And then you draw it down a bit further, now you expose the sediment, and the river starts cutting a channel through there, and then this channel becomes wider with time, and, you know, more flows. And then you lower it a bit more, it widens and deepens a bit more, and eventually starts growing vegetation, and then you get to what we call a quasi-equilibrium, where it just becomes more like a natural river system. And this is upper Lake Mills, and we're seeing this. It's cut all the way down. It's cut all the way down to the bottom of the pre-dam valley. We're starting to see new flippling vegetation come in here. The sediment terraces have been left behind. This is the lower part. So, these are looking upstream. This is from the deck of the old spillway, deck above the gates of Glens Canyon Dam, looking in the lower part of Lake Mills. And you can see how the vegetation's come in nicely on these kelslopes and the sediment terraces down here. Those photos were just taken yesterday from the webcams. And this is the upper part of Lake Aldwell. So, we see we've got the sediment terrace up here, which has got a lot of nice vegetation on it. And a lot of these logs came in from the last winter storm season. There were some there before, but we're getting more coming in. And then this is near Elwah Dam, looking upstream, and vegetation has come back here quite nicely. One way we know that the river's cut all the way down to the pre-dam surface is the exposure of all the stumps. That's absolute proof that this has happened. This is a map showing the contours of Lake Mills before the dam was filled. So, this is back in nineteen twenty-one, I think it was. The dam got built in nineteen twenty-seven. And it's interesting to look at the alignment of the river channel back in nineteen twenty-one was through here, so the exact same place it is now, through here, this way, and then we have a channel there now. The main channel right now is this way, but we have a channel following the sole pre-dam alignment everywhere, all the way down to Glens Canyon. So, we're getting quite close, so there won't be too much sediment left to erode. Same kind of thing in Elwah. The stumps are a lot bigger there, but we're seeing these giants cedar stumps exposed. Here, this is the 101 Bridge here. Elwah Dam was over here. The old alignment went through this way, and now we've got a different alignment. A lot of that's due to the 101 Bridge. That just caused the river to kick over a little bit further this way. And this has got a lot of alder trees on that, too. So, it may need a little sun over time, but it'll probably be a bit slower. And it's taken a new alignment through where the stumps were. And then when it gets to here, it's pretty much following the same path that it had before the dam was put in. If we look at some slides of the downstream river, Andy has put together a wonderful series of aerial photographs. These are taken at least twice a month during the winter flood season, and at least once a month during the summer. So, we've got a very rich history of our photography here. And just to orient you, this is where Glens Canyon Dam walks towards. This is the park entrance. This is Highway 101 Bridge. It's Elwah Dam, so this is Lake Aldwell. This is where the city's raining well is. There's the state fishery channel, and then the tribal hatchery is down in this area. These colors show where the bank erosion has occurred. It's been about fifty-five acres, a lot of it within the National Park boundary. Some erosion here. This happened a couple winters ago, maybe. One of the trees fell across the 101 Bridge. That's over with now. We actually had sedimentation in Elwah that backed up all the way to here, and so we've seen incision through that. And it's actually lowered to flood stage for property owners along here because the river has cut through that old delta that was formed by Lake Aldwell. And then we've seen bits of erosion, bank erosion here, usually on the outside of a meander. And then, as we saw, ninety percent of the sediment that's been eroded has made it to the coastal area and formed this beach. These sequences of slides by Delta Model with USGS has shown how this beach area has really grown. And even if you look at July 2015 to February of this year, it grew even a bunch more. It's been exciting to see the transformation of that beach area. And then, here's a sequence of slides that by some infrastructure report to the city. So, this is the Elwah River flowing this direction. This is the diversion we're, that new engineer Griffel. This is the county bridge. This is the state fishery channel, and this is where the raining well is. And so, this is what it looked like in August 2011 before dam removal. This is April in 2013. This is when we had the most sediment going in the river. And things here are radically different, a little, you know, a lot of sediment moving through. Still have a channel leading by the raining well, which is here. And this is what it looked like last month, with more flow. I don't know, this is a little bit hard to excuse me, but we've got a lot of flow going to this channel by the raining well.
Where's the raining well?
So, and this one would be here, and it's also here, and it's also...
It looks like we have more water flowing into the raining well. Initially, it was choking off our inlet to the raining well.
And part of the reason for that was because the sediment that gets trapped in the water treatment plant, they were discharging it back right in here.
Wow. That didn't work.
Well, that doesn't work quite so well, but that was extracted out, and then the flood, this last flood, just kind of moved it out a little bit. And then they're not having to use the treatment plant so much anymore, so we don't have to worry about putting sediment back here. So, now the channel's nicer.
You keep speaking of the sediment. Do you guys keep track of the non-natural sediment, like off of the concrete? Do you have any idea how much of that is still remaining from the removal of the dams?
It's kind of like an eagle at Aceback. It's the quantities of concrete in the river. And we did start observing that about a year or two into dam removal, and, you know, it looked like chunks of concrete that, as it would roll down, would get smaller and smaller and smaller. But, you know, and I think one trip, Jennifer and I'm not sure if it was you and Andy or someone, but they surveyed all the different pieces they found in the bar, and then we told them what the volume, and it's like less than one tenth of a percent of the sediment that came down. So, it's not real significant in terms of the volume of sand gravel, silt, and clay that came out of the reservoir.
But the vines have mostly moved down?
Yes. Those fine sediments are so easily suspended that they go almost the speed of water, whereas sand does not. Sand can go in suspension, you can kind of go so much the speed of water, but then it'll stop. And then it'll get moved again, and it'll stop. And then gravel, it rolls along the streambed at a much slower pace, and cobbles even much slower than that. Didn't I go a couple of channel widths during one flood, and it's set there for several months, and then maybe move a little bit? And these concrete chunks, they move like the cobbles, but they tend to abrate and they get smaller as they roll. It'd be like rolling a snowball down a hill that doesn't have any snow. Instead of getting bigger, it just tends to get smaller. And that's... Yes, sir.
In terms of the water quality and humidity, with the river returning to the condition it was prior to removal of the dams, and what can the city expect in terms of water quality as part of the model?
Right. So, that's a good question. And Lake Aldwell, of course, was built first, and it was capturing any sandy gravel that went into Lake Aldwell, and was also trapping a significant portion of the fine sediments, the silts and clays. And then in nineteen twenty-seven, Lake Mills came on and entrapped, of course, all of the sandy gravel up there, and it trapped about seventy, maybe eighty percent of all the silt and clay coming through. And then, so maybe twenty, thirty percent of the silt and clay would go on through the reservoir, kind of depending on whether we're in flood stage. And flood stage, you have a chance to get through. Some of it would get through, and lower flows have all been trapped. So, now we don't have those reservoirs to trap anything anymore. So, all the sandy gravel naturally comes from Elwah, is coming through the system, and all the silt and clay is naturally coming through the system. Plus, it's been picking up a lot of reservoir erosion sediments, but that's what's rapidly diminishing. So, what we're rapidly approaching is sediment loads that are mimicking the natural sediment loads from the upstream watershed. And so, the city can expect natural sediment loads. Unless we get some floods that are, say, in the order of a twenty-five-year flood or bigger, then that will erode more pieces of the reservoir sediment, but it'll rapidly diminish. So, I think at one point, the sediment loads from the reservoir were under twenty times more than what was coming from the watershed that year. And now, we're thinking, instead of a hundred and twenty times, it's like point zero three times more. So, we're rapidly decreasing. So, with the raining well, with the surface diversion facility, the city should be in great shape for the drinking water, potable water supply through the raining well, for the water to Nippon Paper, the state fishery channel, and the tribal hatchery. Most of the time, that water should be fine for most purposes. During those short-duration floods, the water will exceed the twenty NTUs. That is probably not suitable for, like, the hatcheries. And I think Nippon can handle things up until about a thousand NTUs. So, there won't be some periods of time for short durations where they may not be able to take that raw water intruding.
So, again, in the long run, we should be experiencing good quantity of water.
Yes. And I think Elwah has some of the best water quality in the country because it's a very pristine watershed. You've got sediments that can be treated at your treatment plant, and with the raining well for drinking water, you automatically filter a lot of that sediment before it ever even gets in the well. Here's another way of looking at some of this information. So, here we're just plotting time, so starting back in April 2011, October 2011, May, all the way to August, and this goes probably to October, I think. And what we're plotting here is a suspended sediment load. So, this would be sand, silt, and clay in tons per day. And what we did is we looked at all the days where the river flow was about fifteen hundred CFS, or cubic feet per second. That's the mean annual flow of the river. And so, all of these are for the same flow condition. And in rivers that aren't disturbed, you would expect for the same flow, even about the same sediment. But what's happening here is, this is before dam removal, and we still had reservoirs, so we're still trapping... Oh, I should mention, this is all being measured in the diversion. So, it's downstream of all dams. So, early on, we're looking at the presence of the reservoir. Then we start dam removal, and for the same discharge, these sediment loads are really going up. And then we get a period where we're into more low summer flows, and then we lose... This is where we lose Lake Aldwell. This is where we lose Lake Mills, back down to low summer flows, but not all that low. And then right back up again at Spring Snowmill. We got kind of low during the summer season there. Dam removal starts up again, and we finally removed the dam in the late, but months, we really spiked up again, and then we've come way back down. This was the final blast to Glens Canyon Dam. We pop up again, and now we're really low. And now we've had the biggest flood since the project started, and we have sediment loads that are pretty much matching what we started with in the beginning of the project.
I thought that you said that that probably goes till October, and the floods worry in November or something?
Yeah. I think that those last data points are actually more like February.
Oh, thank you, Andy. Thanks for that clarification.
It's definitely covered the one and one.
So, this is just a summary and conclusions. So, the reservoir removal is largely complete. The channel is in size of the pre-dam valley bottom. And although the largest floods that occurred this last winter since the dam removal project started, we measured the smallest volume of erosion to date, and at least on the annual basis, and that was point seven million, or seven hundred thousand cubic yards. And minor measurable erosion is criminally expected during large floods. And again, we're talking something like a twenty-five-year flood or greater. And then the sediment concentrations are now stabilizing for a given flow. And the sediment pulse has reached the coast, and the new delta there is stabilizing. And the river is becoming wider in response to restored sediment waters. And the fish are starting to come back. And this is what was known as smoky water before Glens Canyon Dam was closed. It started to turn to red. And this is what it looked like last year. It's almost a webcam or photo, but it's a little bit different position. We haven't had a time to update this photo yet, but it's well on the road to restoration. So, that was the last slide, and Matthew, open up for more questions if you have any.
I do. So, how long do you suspect it will take for all vegetation to come back so that it's actually fairly stable and it's actually holding the sediment rather than, you know, putting extra and pulling down?
Andy, you have more local knowledge on vegetation? Do you want to... It's a great question about vegetation.
So, I think that as far as the floodplain vegetation, we're seeing pretty rapid colonization by the willows where there's fine sediment, a little bit slower growing where there's gravel on the exposed floodplain, but the park's revegetation crews have been probably... Any of you have noticed, there are a lot of fresh plantings out there. The vegetation that you see up here had about a two-year head start on what's growing down in the valley bottom, and now it's about ten to fifteen feet high, mostly alders. Vegetation down in the floodplain will grow a little bit slower, but by the time it gets, you know, essentially a person high, it's going to trap a lot of fine sediment just around the trees and shrubs. It will take on the order of several decades before the wood is stabilizing banks by falling in the river and forming loch beds. But it's safe if you start getting vegetation growing on the floodplain, it'll be trapping fine sediment that's moving through the floodplain, and then you start getting into a feedback where the dying vegetation and the fine sediment then accelerate the growth. We'll see mature forests here that are very functional in forty years, and then, you know, the bigger trees are going to take hundreds of years to form.
Back into the flood area. So, how long till that vegetation, you think, gets to be, you know, said, a person high? Right now, that's been slow.
So, a person high in the flood area, again, depends a little bit on whether it's coarse or fine. So, if you go up to upper Lake Mills where some of the, I guess, some of the first exposures of the pre-dam surface, we're already seeing in the former channels of the river there, some of those floodplains, willow and alder that are as tall or taller than me. I think in Aldwell, we've got, in some portions of the floodplain, where the vegetation hasn't been wiped out by the floods of last winter, we've also got trees that are taller than me. And it'll be probably another two years, and the little patches of green that you see here, well, you'll just see little patches of gray, so it'll be flip-flop. I think, you know, within a couple of years, most of the reservoir surface is going to be at least sparsely covered with trees that are as tall or taller than me.
With the logs in the flood, and that's going to be a great starter for this. It'll provide shade and also shelter when we do have periods of higher flow.
That's kind of what we're seeing on the reservoirs where, around the full new floodplain surfaces, where there are piles of wood, essentially there are islands of green that are building out into the gravel.
How long do you think it'll be before the deciduous trees start to slowly back down and the other vegetation starts to fill in? I mean, obviously, on new ground, opportunistic alders and everything are going to take over. How long do you think before it starts to get back to, I guess, I call it, its natural?
So, growth. In the middle, what I always used to call the middle river, but it's now kind of the up above Lake Mills, the Geyser Valley reach, where I've been hiking up there since I was a kid, a lot of the new bars, we would see alder colonize, and then by the time the alder is maybe ten feet tall, you're getting a lot of fir growing, fir and moss growing. So, I would expect, I mean, we're already seeing some small fir trees out on both reservoir surfaces, and those are some of the trees that have been planted most aggressively by the revegetation crews because they've been trying to get those conifers, because the cones only fall so far from the tree, they've been trying to get them out into the unvegetated area. Natural revegetation, I would say, we'd see conifers, you know, about this tall, five to ten years after the alders start growing. But with the park planting at the same time, I think they're... But with the park planting at the same time, I think there are going to be at least a sparse population of conifers growing up with the alder. And that's where the fir really thrive because they're a very, I guess, a light-seeking tree. The other trees, the cedar and the hemlock, will just be able to grow under that canopy. Thank you.
So that we might, so that we might provide ourselves a little break. I'm going to give you, probably have a couple more minutes here before the update.
I'm curious to the fish. What happened with fish that used Lake Mills and Lake Aldwell for head of town?
Well, I've focused a lot more on the sediment than the fish, but I do know that during drawdown in both Aldwell and Mills, the park was doing regular fish surveys to try to identify, particularly bull trout, but any fish that were stranded in the reservoirs and try to relocate them essentially into tributary waters or clean water, at least out of where they were being stranded as the reservoirs were drawn down. I know that the bull trout counts have remained high up above Mills, and I would imagine that many of the fish just moved upstream into clean water as the, basically as the reservoir got more muddy. And periodically, when I was walking the reservoir shoreline during drawdown, would see fish essentially right at the mouths of the tributaries, you know, their snouts into the cleaner water. So I'm sure that a lot of the lake species that weren't native to the reservoirs are long gone, washed out to sea, or eaten by whatever wildlife found them. But a lot of the riverine species, the rainbow and the bull trout, simply moved into river habitat. They had to compete with other fish that were already there. But we saw very healthy fish populations in all the sections of the river.
When you compare the status quo to the pre-dam removal dynamic, are any surprises or unusual revelations surfaced?
You know, it's interesting. I think we've found more of the sandy gravel eroding than was anticipating, and perhaps, and at least initially, less of the silt and clay eroding. We tended to think that the silt is a pretty poor material from an engineering standpoint, highly erodible, but it actually does a fair bit of cohesion, and so that was more resistant. The sandy gravel had a lot more lateral erosion. So one of our objectives was to try and erode as much laterally of the exposed delta surface as we could, and we got almost all of it. I didn't think that was possible, so it was actually a good thing for the project because we didn't want to leave a lot of really thick terraces behind on that delta. So it was more successful in eroding the delta than we originally thought. So that was perhaps one surprise. We expected the delta at the coastline would really erode, but it's like, wow, it just really happened. And I think the other surprise is the river was more efficient in transporting the sediment down the river to the ocean than a lot of the transport formulas would actually predict. And there's reasons for that, but it was amazing to see how resilient the river really was. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Wonderful presentation. Hopeful science.
Can I ask one more question, or are we...
Well...
Well, I guess, for me, it was just the rainy well, the viability of our rainy well. I know that because of the sedimentation that we had, there was some compromise to it, and I know we measured, we measured part of the water, and I know that we still need to do more testing to make sure that the water we get from the rainy well, the amount of water we get from the rainy well is the same amount, you know, pre-dam removal. So I guess that's the question. Knowing that it's going to take maybe a couple of years for all that floodplain vegetation to take hold, thinking that, and we only had one 25-year flood event, so I don't, you know, I guess I'm thinking just another year or two at least as a minimum to kind of watch it. How long are you guys going to be tracing or watching this river?
I don't really see the rainy well as having any more impact in the project. The project impacts to the rainy well largely over. And so, and remember that all wells sort of decrease capacity over time. Just, that's just the way they're, what happens. It's just like you buy a car, you know, it tends to deteriorate over time, and wells do the same thing, and periodically have to be re-emultated. I think the trend I've seen of the rainy well data over time of showing it diminishing capacity before we even started the project, I think maybe some more data would see what difference it actually made during these two years. But I wouldn't anticipate any big significant impacts to the rainy well as we go forward.
Okay. You're going to be around, there may be some people in the audience who've come for this presentation. If you'd be able to stand a few minutes with them out in the foyer, if you're going to sell a couple beers out there. So those of you with questions to the presenters, please take a moment to ask them. Those questions are out in the foyer. Thank you, good privilege.
Thank you.
So we have, we're going to, we need to hear ourselves a little bit of a break, so we'll have a five-minute break, which will take us to 6:05. We'll be here in a meeting in 6:05.